DM. I think you're ready to come in, anybody on Zoom? We go ahead and start the roll call.
John Myers.
Here.
Pete Ketchum.
Here.
Jim Eisen.
Here.
Josh McCarty.
Here.
Rob Anderson.
Here.
Jonathan Myers.
Here.
And Josh Turner is currently absent.
Pete, would you do the identification?
Sure, if we all take a moment to... Dear God and my Father, we are grateful this evening to assemble here as a council and life officials, department heads to meet on the county business. We pray for that presence, that guidance, to listen to those in attendance, listen to their proposals, and we pray that that will guide our decisions. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus' name.
Good stand for a further week.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the difficult, with liberty and justice for all.
Josh Turner is here. All right, we move on to July 13th agenda. There's one addition to the agenda. It will be under Old Business. Justice Senator Joe update will be one, and District 121 budget damage will be two. We'll do approve it. Motion by Mr. Eisen, second by Mr. McCarty, all in favor. Aye aye. Those passes. Other comments?
Evening. Shane Bowery, Johnson County Professional Firefighters, Secretary Treasurer, also our township resident. Hopefully here tonight to set the tone for, it looks like a long agenda, so set the tone for some fun and lighthearted. Nathan, our organization's president, cannot be here, he's got some family allegations, so I am here taking care of this for him. Basically, our membership for Johnson County Professional Firefighters, political action committee, wanted to do something nice for all of you folks, our governing bodies, the elected officials, in light of some very difficult, challenging times we've had. This particular moment seemed like the best time to really take a second, slow down, and thank you guys for what you've done for our membership, as well as Johnson County and the citizens of this great community. And what we've done is working with a well-known drink manufacturer, I'm sure you guys have all heard of Yeti, Yeti tumblers, and they're synonymous for building quality drinkware and coolers and so forth. So we wanted to do something that set the foundation for and represented our commitment to you guys, the members of Johnson County Professional Firefighters, and the relationship that we've been working on, and build on that relationship and strengthen it. So we had a tumblers made personalized for you guys to represent that relationship and strengthen that as we move forward. So I'd like to take a moment and hand these out, but essentially we've got our press on one side, and on the back, we have them laser etched with your guys' names and what you do for Johnson County. On a side note, I will say that if you go on Yeti's website, you will not be able to get this particular feature done, for whatever reason, they have, this discontinued it. So these are quite rare now, so enjoy, you're welcome. And it was quite an undertaking getting this done, so, but again, it just goes to show, we really do appreciate the membership that we advocate for, appreciate what you guys have done, and giving us a seat, allowing us to have a voice at the table through all these discussions, and certainly your guys' commitment and work with our individual district boards and governing bodies themselves, so.
J O N Myers. You gotta get both the Myers's.
I see what you did there.
Thank you. Thank you. Sheriff, take it.
I got mine in the first. We'd like to get a picture if we can at some point, so if you guys wouldn't mind. I don't want to.
No, we're good. Do a video too.
Anybody in the audience wants a picture?
My very close.
I hate to tell you the scrunch, but...
Everybody hold your breath.
Yeah, ready? Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Get one more, two, three.
Everybody hold their cup up.
If I doesn't have one, I'm sorry. Last chance, kids.
Hold your cup up.
Josh, you want to hold your cup up, so fans are going to be doing it again. Okay, one, two, three. Beautiful.
Anybody else? Anybody from Jet Fusion?
These are bikes, all scooters.
Yeah, we can use the scooters.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Next is, considering that routine matters, would you like Jim's meeting, special meeting? Questions that you can pull out? Order of annulation? Motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Eisen, all in favor. Aye aye. Next is, ain't keeper text question.
Ken Kosky, Director of Tourism, and this is John Lyles, our President of the Board. And we wanted to get you tumblers too, but as we mentioned, they discontinued that program right now. They're a day late. So just wanted to provide you a brief update. Our visitor center has been open almost a month now, and we're averaging about 70 visitors a week, which is not bad in this COVID era. As far away as Wisconsin, Michigan, Ohio. Local people that want to shop downtown and need to use the restroom, so it's been going really well, and we received comments like, wow, why can't every visitor center be like this one? So we were going to have you there for an open house, but COVID canceled that, but we are open, so if you'd like to come in sometime and check it out, you're more than welcome. And also wanted to let you know that that project did come in $135,000 on the budget, which was fortuitous in that, obviously with COVID-19, our revenue is down, but that extra revenue combined with us taking cost-saving measures puts us actually in excellent financial shape. We will not be coming to you for our fourth quarter of the appropriation. We're going to make this third one our final one, and that will get us through the rest of the year and into the first part of next year. Basically where we're at.
Well done. Ken, what is the year-to-date revenue looking like compared to 2019?
We're actually, our first two months were way up pre-COVID, so I mean, just rock and rolling, and then the subsequent three, four months have been down. So we're only down about 20%, which when you compare us to a lot of our counterparts in central Indiana and the rest of the state, some of them are down 50, 70, 80%. So we're just down 20%, and it's not that bad.
Thank you. I'll make motion to approve this. I say. Motion by Mr. Eisen, second by Mr. Henderson, all in favor. Aye aye. All opposed? Pass. Circuit Court. Where's your walk at?
I wasn't supposed to be here till I'm filling in, so I walked up music while I was waiting. Plus, I always like to guess the political beat. Yeah, might be some country next.
I'm ready.
I'm Peter Nishen, I'm the judge for Johnson Superior Court II. I'm here on behalf of Judge Reeser, who's out of town, starts an appropriation order or transfers of money for overtime. We want to be able to move it up to accounts, one's an overtime account, the other one has to do with, we have vacancy, temporary vacancy that's being filled out of June of court, the assistant court reporter, who will transfer money from that account that was allocated and pay that salary. So we're not asking for any money from the council, we're just asking to transfer some overtime money, some from an assistant court reporter position that's vacant, but it's being filled.
Sorry, Amy, why didn't we have to transfer from one overtime account?
It's different departments.
I should have answered that, but didn't know, so thank you.
And this one, we could appear in a time that...
Well, it has to do with IT.
Yeah.
So with all the issues we've had with Zoom, and the IT, everybody, the IT department's been slammed, so hopefully it'll get us up even to now. We've got some, there's a shortage, I believe, right at about $10,000 this will, I have it here. We have a $10,411 shortage at this point, but I believe that this $10,000 will get us closer right there.
I'll motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Jonathan T. Myers, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes. Problem solving grant.
That is me as well, as you, most of you know, we have a problem-solving court, we have a reentry court that runs out of my court, Superior Court II, and our court administrator did a wonderful job getting us a $10,000 grant from the state. And apparently, this is my first experience with grants, but the state, surprise, surprise, tells you what you have to do with the grant that they award you, which I guess is fine. And this is how it's broken down, but apparently we need to get your approval to put it into the account correctly. By the way, the court's doing very well, it's a two-year program, we graduated our first two people. It's a lot like the recovery court up in Greenville City Court, we're dealing with high-risk offenders who come out of the DOC after going through a therapeutic treatment community. Typically, we've got a lot of meth abusers, some heroin and alcohol, and while we've had some failures, we've had some successes, and so people are doing really well. I have to tell you, a couple of years ago, I would have never thought I would have entered these type of courts, but they really do work, they're really helping some people. So I'm really glad that we do it, and I truly appreciate the assistance that we get from this council, as well as other stakeholders. We've got a lot of community volunteers that help us in our staffing, and we're really blessed, we've got a good program going.
That update, congratulations on the early success. And also be a warning, be a warning for grant, with that, I motion to approve as presented.
How many people you have in there? I'd say about 22. We've got three or four more coming, and with the COVID, we couldn't, you know, we could do Zoom staffing, but we couldn't, they weren't releasing people from the DOC, so it's kind of since it wiped out a little bit, 22, 23. We're about to lose one, but hopefully we'll get a few more, so. We have our failures, but there's some successes too.
Right.
Second, maybe still be the second.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. Ketchum, all in favor.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Say good.
Stop's great.
Good evening, Joe Villanueva, Prosecutor's Office. Here to talk just briefly about our stop grant, that is the grant that funds our domestic violence deputy prosecutor. We've had this grant with ICGI for a number of years. They have asked to extend some of that stuff, I think, with some COVID problems. We've already received a letter from them at the end of March guaranteeing an additional $10,181.25 funding. However, like we deal with many of our grant people, that money's not going to be here right now, so the purpose of me being here tonight is to ask the council allow us, basically on paper, to let the grant run into the red while we're waiting for these guarantee funds to come in. We can then take that once it comes in and appropriate it back into, into the grant line. That allows our deputy to continue to get paid for prosecuting domestic violence crimes.
Reasonable request, considering the times we're in. I'll make a motion to approve it. Aye. Mr. Ketchum, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Community correction juvenile grant?
Good evening, David Cox, Assistant Director, Juvenile Community Corrections. I'm kind of here on a twofold. We have two grants that we need to establish fund numbers for, as well as appropriate the funding in each line. The first one is the grant from the Indiana Department of Corrections, which is our main grant that funds our program. You should have all of the information for that. It is $225,000, $225,180 appropriated, it's lined out within the agenda.
Anything do or differ with the grants by research and conditions?
No, sir, everything stays the same.
All right. I motion to approve item C5.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. Curry, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Pass.
The second item, number six, the Family Resource and Education Grant. This grant is from the Indiana Department of Child Services, and it's bundled through Children Bureau, which is a regional manager of the funds. It is for $40,000, some change, and it's also appropriated and lined out as listed in the agenda. And that is the same as my second.
Yes, sir. I can motion to approve item C6 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. Eisen, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Pass.
Thank you.
So Amy, how many grants? Got a ballpark?
I think about 60.
60, I have the grants.
Sheriff, would you like to look at this again?
I did. What? Can I have some free chat? Wayne Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff. The first thing we have on our agenda tonight is for the jail corrections officer. And I'll be back next month as well, but we want to have someone assigned here at the West Annex. We did that for about a month when we had the COVID, checking people, kind of work people through the building, but it's something that's needed here, and also with probation, adult probation is that, just for the safety of our folks. Things are changing drastically in law enforcement or public safety. This is a request that I have, we've kind of given some illustrations that we sent out, but I think the folks, the employees deserve to have somebody here in their building as well.
Sheriff, you think you'll be able to fill the position rather quickly, or?
Yes, I do. And just kind of for the record, you don't have any extra staff or any extra people you can move around and pull, right, at this point? No, many, many years ago, what had happened also, they pulled a person from the juvenile center. A lot occurs in juvenile court, a lot of hostile people will come, things happen in the cases, and I covered that, so I took some manpower. We're kind of thin right now, and also with people, the jail construction, taking construction workers through the jail, we're strapped right now, and I know a bunch of time I will be in front of you again for more manpower. We expected that as well.
And Judge Hamner expressed his support?
Yes, Judge Hamner, we've spoken to all the judges, and they're behind us. And I've also worked with Angela Morris for the probation as well, and we discussed some options, and that's why I'm coming, because she has one field officer. Her numbers probably show that she could have two field officers, but they also use their field officer, who is a special deputy, to cover different things that may occur in the office. We've got a lot of different folks that are coming through there to be checked on because of their probation, so that's why I will be back next month, as we were in talks to get this tour at the night, or I would have both of them on there, and I do apologize for that. Are you, you feel like there's going to be some increase to courthouse security level budget at the time? No, I won't do anything with the courthouse. If I do these two positions now, I will not need to come, it will be strictly for the jail. Do you have enough people to cover vacation, sicknesses, and overtime? We take care of those. When we put, allowed everybody together, from just having courthouse budget to the correctional budget, that helped us.
Motion to approve item C7. Second. Motion by Jonathan T. Myers, second by Mr. Eisen, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Pass.
Thank you. And our next item is just the law enforcement continuing education. Our system, before we do, the detectives or any officers come in and they do their interviews, is aged. We use Axon for our body cameras, our tasers, in our storage, so we want to go with them to replace the current system that we have, so that we're using all of the same equipment storage, everything's right there, it's simple, the prosecutor's office is familiar with it, but we need to upgrade that, it's just moving the $6,619.92 to be able to make that purchase.
Make a motion to approve the question. I'll say. Motion by Mr. McCarty, a second by Mr. Henderson, all in favor. Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Treasurer.
I love it. I don't have gifts today, but I could perhaps find some bottle openers to bring next month. Michelle Angrease, Johnson County Treasurer, and I'm here to correct the housekeeping error made at budget time. When I eliminated a full-time position, I submitted the wrong line item.
I motion to approve C9. $3,000.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Jonathan T. Myers, all in favor. Aye. All opposed? Pass. Thank you.
Oh. The honor pointed out that perhaps I should have made a note that that was retroactive back to October 19th, with a payday of January 6th, December, December 19th.
It was listed on the agenda, so as presented includes that.
Thank you.
Honor.
This is just, we got the invoice for the jail, but...
I take it you want to pay that, right?
Understand the request, and just wanted to surprise the council that back in March, I did reach out to Amy and Mango who helped us with the brain and games and our group, our team, just to see if it made sense to do any kind of a revive during the brain scenario that occurred. And all folks chimed in and said we were not able to refund or refinance the bond because there was still a call provision, and that was to get the vesting straight at that point in time. They also reviewed our other jail bonds, just to see if there's any potential for savings, and they all said that there was nothing to refund at that point in time that would generate savings to outweigh the expenses, so staying on top of that, understand it's a big dollar item, that was our last check in with our financial folks, so that much we can do there. With that, I motion to approve both items C10 and C11. Pass.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. McCarty, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Community crossing grant.
Good evening, Maston Highway Director. Items 12, 13, and 14 are all highway related. Item 12 and 13 are the contractor costs for a road reconstruction project in Carefree South neighborhood. This is a project that we applied for community crossings funds, a debt fund project, so the appropriation in item 12 is the anticipated amount of community crossings money that we will receive in reimbursement for this project, and then item 13 would be the local portion of that project. Program is typically 50/50 of two-way maximum amount, so this was our second priority application in that call, and there was not enough money left to do a full 50/50, which is why there's more in the request for item 13.
Could you give me a little idea about what the timing of the construction is or the improvement?
So the scope of the project, we are currently doing storm sewer repairs ahead of the contractor coming in and doing their work. You've probably got about two more weeks for that work, at which point the contractor will roll in into the actual road construction.
My question's on the 1173 account, NVH restricted, had a negative balance as of July 14th, or maybe through May 31st. Is this the count that was in the closed one?
Yeah, this is, 1173 is the portion of 1176, called NVH restricted, that, they call it restricted because there are certain things that we can use that money for, and we're required to spend 50% of our NVH district annual distributions in 1173. So the balance is in the red, but if you'll notice, half of our distributions every month have been going into 1173. So it's in the red right now. When we get to the end of the year, it shouldn't be in the red, and for some reason it is, we have the ability to transfer cash from 1176 to 1173 to balance out.
You know the balance in 1176, I didn't see that, the ones I printed, the summary receipts and expenditures.
I don't know, but it's...
All right.
I don't know, they're not up yet.
Okay.
I was thinking it was around four.
Okay.
So between the, it's a separate fund, but it's not a separate fund.
Yeah.
I threw all of this, it's very confusing, but essentially 1176 and 1173 at the end of the year together has to be in the Y. So if 1173 could run red, we still have the cash in 1176, if we got to the end of the year, it needs to move it into 1173. But in theory, our receipts, by the time we get through December, should get us out of the red in 1173.
And we're not paying the contractors until the work is completed.
We pay, it is in arrears, but it's progress billing, so we pay for work as it's completed, rather than just one check at the end of the question.
Do we have this last person?
Yeah, because the 1173 just started, but this is the third year, so...
Yeah, because the 1173 just started, but this is the third year, second year, I think.
Thanks for indulging that question. I thought we had trouble.
Well, it's a great question, because it's the exact opposite of what we're used to doing definitely when it comes to handling budgets. The mindset of something being in the red and being, okay, I still haven't wrapped my head around yet. But the key is that we at least get to zero, if not somewhere in the black at the end of the year. And there are ways that we can do that. We're better off waiting until the end of the year. Money that moves into 1173, if we put too much in there, then we have, we get a lot more freedom with how we spend it, if it's in 1176 and 1173. So we're better off trying to put exactly what we need to in the restricted amount at the end of the year. So we've got more freedom than the rest of them.
Thank you. I motion, we'll put the explanation. Thank you. Motion to approve items C12 and C13 as presented.
A motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Jonathan T. Myers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passive.
Item 14 is three additional appropriations related to our Louisville, Indiana railroad crossing upgrade project. This project actually is currently underway. There's been several crossings that have already been completed. This is for the installation of warning lights and gates at those crossings along the rail line. The county applied for funding as the project believed, even though there are crossings within Greenwood, Franklin, and Whitewood as part of this project. And then those entities reimburse the county for the dollar amount that we have to pay out for their protective crossings. This is an additional appropriation that helps cover some upcoming additional costs for their crossings related to pedestrian concerns.
This account is also in the red as of the report date. So similar, well, different.
So anything in any fund in the 8,000 or 9,000 numbers is either a state or federal reimbursement fund. We, this is the first year that we've really done it, and we kind of did it with our last appropriation. Yes, it's very similar in that we appropriate the amount that we need to spend. So that fund will run into the red when those dollars are spent. But when we receive reimbursement for dollars we've already spent, they come back into that fund and bring it back to zero. That's what you intend.
That's how we balance the grants.
Yeah. It makes it easier when it comes time to balance those reports or the auditor's office to keep track of those.
Auditor's office is comfortable with that.
Our auditor's office told us we had to do it.
Why is it still listening?
Yes. So with that, I've motioned to approve item C14, passive.
Second. A motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. Ketchel, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, passive.
Thank you very much.
Other business, 911, five to board. I'll ask somebody else if you'd like to take it.
You're doing a great job. John, maybe five.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye. We know he's doing a great job. We didn't even need discussion.
Works for me.
No, no, no.
All righty. Old business, new business. Justice Center, jail, nothing. Mr. Walls.
Good evening. I'm Wes Harrison, the owner's representative for the jail construction project, and just here to give you a quick update tonight as to the progress of the jail. I can't remember if I was here last month or the month before, but since that time, our medical area is going to be turned over to the owner's group this week. It's the area where the former outdoor courtyard was. It was buried in the center of the building. We converted that to the new medical space, which was greatly needed. That turns over this week. We've got furniture and the equipment to be arriving this week. So it'll be in force and ready to go on Monday morning. So foundations for the new jail pod is, are nearly complete. Building, pre-engineered metal building that arrives this Wednesday. And it'll be set in position, start to be set in position next Monday. Frame should be up by the end of the month, and then it will be totally enclosed by the end of August. So you'll see, get past that way, try to drive by it the next couple of weeks, you'll see quite a change out in the backside there. Also part of the project is a new salad court where we bring the resties in and process them. That portion is underway, is located directly north of the existing salad court, and is, the foundations are nearly complete on that. The wall construction will begin later this week, and then it'll be under roof towards the, in about 30 days, about the middle of August. The interior renovation, after we get the medical area done, there's an area of interior renovation that gets turned over. Those people that are in the medical area now who did the new space along with a couple of other components to free up some areas in the existing building that then get renovated. And then eventually, that renovation will take about three or four months, and then eventually the intake area gets completely renovated to be more efficient, more safe for the officers, and just operational wise, it's a much better situation, especially with the new salad court, too. The cells, the prefabricated cells, which are being fabricated in Georgia, will arrive in the middle of October and be certainly set in place in the metal building. And in part of the process for the, part of the project for the jail construction was to transfer over from the Stanley security system to a system called Accurate Security System. That transition in the existing building is just about complete. That's been pretty flawless. We've been very impressed with them. Fantastic job. And so, so far, what I can report to date is that we're on schedule, and to date, we're meeting our budget obligations. So just want to bring that to you tonight. Any questions from anyone?
Good report. Good report, yeah.
Have they started the construction of the pods? Do you know if that's starting?
About half of those have been fabricated. They're in store down in Georgia, and the other half are in fabrication right now. So, yeah. So important thing, and that, as you know, you were part of that group, we needed to get in line to get those fabricated. Otherwise, we have a building that we couldn't have, we wouldn't have any containment for, we wouldn't have any pods for. So timing wise, that worked out great for us. So, yeah, we should fall right into place in October, and we'll be ready for it.
Do you feel like, we're hearing a lot about supply chain, logistics, all that. How do you build a whole project, just stack it up?
I, we've had, well, for example, in the interior space, we had some materials that were a little bit slow in coming. Glass, for some reason, was part of the security glasses for it to come by. It is coming at the last minute, we're getting it this week, so it didn't slow down the final turnaround date. But that, and then the, we had some workers that didn't want to work inside the jail because of the COVID thing. So there was about a two-week delay. That, we had enough time to be able to absorb that time. So our turnaround date has always been July 15th, so we met that date. But we could have been a little bit ahead of schedule had it not been for supply chain issues or labor issues as far as illness. So, no, so far, everything's gone pretty much to plan. It's a construction site, so it looks like a war zone over there right now. So the sheriff and these guys, they're fantastic to work with. Appreciate your cooperation. It's made it much easier for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Walls, you got anything to add?
Nope, he did it.
Pretty good.
Let him do it.
All right, thanks. Discussion. So Amy sent some stuff to everybody. Everybody looked over it? Did you guys get anything on your meeting today?
Yeah, so the salaries study committee, we met earlier, they, we are tossing around a couple of different ideas. Amy's going to gather some information to us, get it to us probably this week. We have another meeting scheduled for July the 29th, and still a lot being tossed around on options and trying to focus on bringing white positions into a more consistent range and setting base salaries.
Do you think you can have it done by this year's budget?
Yes.
Do you agree with him?
Yes, I agree with everything you said.
He spoke the truth. All right. So Amy wants budgets to her by September, what's your request to her by September 23rd, correct? Is it going to be the due date?
If you change your other dates.
Right. And my quarter is supposed to give an update on September 21st. Such dates are written as they are?
So the post timeline represents new dates. I like, I mean, I like this, this lines up with your, your salary study.
Yeah, so we're hoping to, I see no reason at all to have some budget guidelines to put in place next season, next meeting. I do have concern about COVID for people. I know I will be out, but that is a lot of the Johnson County schools fall break week. Anyone else planning on?
Yeah. I mean, have BTOs get a little bit, try to look around a second reading, but I'm seeing a concern.
Yeah.
What's the vote, council?
You guys need to decide. Well, you might want to just say, tell the audience kind of what you guys are talking about.
Pushing the first reading date back to October 5th. And second day will be on the 6th or the 7th of October. And the second reading will be on October 14th or before. You can change our regular council meetings September, October. Start regular reading with September 21st, September and October 26th.
Yes.
And those meetings would start at 5:00 or 6:00 PM as usual.
So just elaborate, you guys are waiting on the lit numbers from the state, which is what Mike's waiting on to give you an update of his plan. He won't get those until September 15th, which is the day after your normal September meeting. So if you guys push the September meeting back a week, you'll have those numbers in the information. So with that, you can make the determination on the salaries, because that's kind of one of the key things you guys are waiting on, right? I'm just saying it so they understand kind of what's going on. It's totally different this year. So, and the reason why. We have to adopt by November 1st. So if we make the October 26th adoption, then we're kind of looking backwards to fill in the gaps, because you have to have 10 days between certain things. So that's how I came up with this proposed schedule. So the first day of first reading has, it's like October 6th. So that's the date we're going to count with the 10 days. So it's up to you when you want the second day of first reading and when you want second reading. It does not matter to me on those days.
And the second reading.
It just can't go past October 14th.
Yeah. And we also define the second.
Typically, yes. But we can change that as well, since it's unusual year, so.
So Amy, I mean, is there, could we do the 5th for the first reading?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Right, so the 5th and 6th or 7th for the first, first reading, first and second days. And then is there a reason that we couldn't go into like the week of the 19th for the second reading?
You cannot go past October 14th. Unless, well, that's mostly for the public hearing for the binding unit, because that doesn't give them 10 days. You can have their hearing earlier. You can have your second reading of the county budget staff, but you can't have theirs after the 14th, because then they won't have 10 days for adoption.
We could probably do that on the second reading day.
Throw it to you, Ben.
We usually do that, those at 2:00, probably, the binding.
Yes, if you change it. Sometimes you guys have to wait. Sometimes you have to go back to your other one.
Right. No, I'm fine with the post timeline. I don't, here the 10-day thing, it just kind of is what it is.
I just need to know, because what I highlighted, because it's up to you guys, I don't know. The second day of first reading and second reading and the public hearing. You need to tell me.
You know, it'd be nice to obviously have those numbers from Mike.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it makes sense to me, I don't know how, I mean, obviously the October 14th thing, how that affects everybody.
Well, I mean, that is what it is. I just wanted to make sure that we have all of this working.
Who knows? We might be all need five six again.
Again, that's just an absolute blast to get. You can have it early. You can have it the sixth and seventh and just be done.
I'm fine with the way, the way it reads here. I, I have an obligation on the, um, October twelfth and thirteenth. I'm fine for the fourteenth. Everything else, um, I can manage.
So do you want second, so first day of first reading will be Monday, October fifth? So the second day of first reading?
On the seventh.
Pretty much. The day in between?
Rob, is that okay?
Gosh, I'm wait.
And then September fourteenth, that's.
For me, the sixth is better than the seventh. It's a little different to anybody else, but I need to make the seventh. You have red?
That's fine. Good. Six or seven?
If we're here on the sixth, we'll be on the seventh. Six is, I'm past, so six is preferred. I can admit the seventh, no problem. And then have, have a break in between the two days, if it was probably. So I'm good on the stack. Make that one.
Fifth and the seventh. October fourteenth.
Well, that's, you can have it earlier. You can have it the ninth, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. I'm here with that.
She must be done with it.
Were you reading this yet?
Yeah.
You can have the binding unit's first day, first thing that day, if they're on whatever.
Second reading. You're not going to be here on the fourteenth, or you don't know yet?
I'll be here on the twelfth. Make the ninth as, uh, my last debate.
Let's just put it down as the ninth, you bet.
No, I mean, I won't be here on the ninth.
What's what?
I just said the ninth, I will not be here.
You said the twelfth.
I will be gone on the ninth. Eighth, I'm available.
You gotta change your vacation.
Well, I mean, we have, um, by then it's not much more.
You have to be here.
My phone in?
Maybe. The answer to that is maybe. You might be able to phone in. I'm not kidding. That could still be a thing.
We'll have to, especially since you're just on charge of this committee.
Well, I'll be done waiting.
So I wonder who we're looking at. Make sure it was the fourteenth or we have another.
Don't, don't work the council around my schedule. My, my concern was a four.
The fourteenth is the last day, but I encourage you to have it earlier.
Yeah. But the audience is usually taken care of in some type of.
Let's try the night. See, it's better all in one week here, it's been, things crazy.
The ninth, film, start. Ninth.
And have the binding units first.
Please re-summarize what this, these, this did. We can't hear her over there, so.
Okay, for budget hearings, October fifth, by the October fifth, will be the first reading. I further, we're gonna say fiscal plan update. October seventh, Wednesday, will be the second day of the first reading. And October ninth will be the second reading, along with the binding review. Will then come first at A M. In our regular council meetings, it's gonna be changed to?
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.
And that'll be date of adoption.
And our September meeting will be September twenty-first. At six P M, correct?
Correct.
Did you get that, Rob?
That is, at what time?
Eight, old thirty? Eight thirty.
Bring your popcorn.
Which one? All three of them are equal?
Yes.
Guidelines.
That requires.
It's administrative. Is your, is your microphone? It wasn't on when you were talking. I tried. So with the exception of the salaries, one hundred series. So you have two, three, and fours.
Black. Hold on. Just not one hundred series.
What I would like is for them to, any budgets that don't have personnel, get them turned in to me, get those out of the way. Kind of phase in some things. So, because it's going to be crunch time later, so.
I'll take black.
Black unless there's a moment. Right? That's what we're here for. Black budgets unless there's a need and a good explanation.
I will work with John on a memo to get out tomorrow.
He's a good wordsmith, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, I've got about a thirty minute update on the. So the Johnson Redevelopment Commission convened, uh, earlier this, um, late June. And we, um, are soliciting proposals for lead assistance from outside legal counsel to aid in the establishment of an economic development area and allocation there. Just, uh, we have received five, or four such proposals, but one pending, which the Redevelopment Commission will then review and make a decision on. Uh, we're focusing efforts on the I sixty-nine corridor with hopes that that becomes something along the lines of a tech corridor, not necessarily warehouses and logistics. We feel like we need to take this step in order to compete. We are way behind municipalities in our county with respect to R D C units yet. So, uh, we are moving forward, and that's the, the update I would like. Later, James.